I'll now call the city council work session meeting to order at 5:30. I'd like to call Heather Richards, Community Development Director, and Evan Hyphus? Trying to get all that. Associate Housing Planner to present our topic.
Great. So, good evening, Mayor and councilors and Planning Commission Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, we wanted to start our discussion on the next step of our growth planning. But before we do, I wanted to introduce you to Elizabeth Decker. She is a consultant from Jet Consulting. She's helping us on this project. She likes writing code. Those are rare individuals in this world, so we're thrilled to have her. Beth Goodman, who you have met before, is on Zoom with us as well. She's with Echo Northwest. And then I'd also like to introduce you to David Bernicker. He is our new Planning Manager. He joined us last Monday on February 3rd. So, all hard questions will direct to him to answer. But Elizabeth and I were just talking. David is well-known in the planning industry. He was both worked on the private side as a consultant and then was also worked with cities as Planning Director. So, it's a small planning world. Elizabeth and David actually shared an office together. Anyways, we're going to get into talking about our Growing McMinnville Mindfully Program. Today, we're going to start the second step of our growth planning that's required by ORS 197.296. So, this is the land use efficiencies. We've talked about how there's three steps to this. The needs analysis, land use efficiencies, and if needed, a UGB alternatives analysis or an amendment to meet our land need to support our growth to 2041 for housing, employment, and public lands. This is a mandate from the state. It's embedded in the law in terms of the work that we need to do and when we need to do it. So, we were intended to adopt a new housing needs analysis and buildable lands inventory by December of 2023. If that shows need, you also have to show how you're meeting that need. And typically, that is having done the land use efficiency work in the UGB amendment. But because the timeframe was so short for us to do that, we did adopt the needs analysis by ordinance number 5141 in February of 2024. So, we were a couple of months late adopting it. The reason we were a couple of months late was because we were also in negotiations with the state about entering into a sequential UGB work plan because we did not have enough time to do the land use efficiencies work to try to reduce the land need and then do the UGB amendment if necessary. So, we entered into that sequential work plan. And that, well, first of all, let me share with you what the need was. We ended up reman, we end up getting a remand from the state on the land need analysis for our park land. And if you remember, we went through that process with ordinance number 5148 in September of 2024. So, our final land need was 202 acres for residential land. This is for the planning period of 2021 to 2041. 202 acres for residential land, 29 acres for industrial land, and 159 acres for commercial land. And then we showed a surplus of 44 acres of public or institutional land need. So, that's the sort of the need and surplus numbers that we're working with as we look at our land use efficiencies next. We entered into the sequential UGB work plan with the state. And what that said was that we needed to submit our needs analysis by February 29 of 2024. We submitted on February 27th. We needed to do the housing production strategy and have that submitted by June 30, 2025. That is a grant deadline. We're working with a grant for that particular product. And then we need to have Task 2 of our work plan done by March 1 of 2026. Task 2 is the land use efficiencies work and the UGB amendment work. We originally set up a deadline for ourselves to do the land use efficiencies work by June 30 of 2025 to give us enough time to do the UGB amendment work and get that into the state. So, getting it done means we've adopted it through our public hearing processes. Because we were delayed in our housing capacity analysis, needs analysis, and our economic opportunity analysis were appealed. So, we submitted them to the state. The state affirmed them. They were then appealed. The state's decision was appealed. The director's decision to the LCDC Land Conservation Development Commission. So, it went there. They held a hearing. They then affirmed the state's decision, so they upheld it. But that can still be appealed. We were not able to move forward with the land use efficiencies work until we got through that process. We have been directed by the state to start moving forward with this work, even though it can still be appealed to the Court of Appeals because we only have three years from entering the sequential UGB work program to get the work done. And that's also embedded in the state laws. So, we're working under these sort of compressed deadlines. We have a process of appeals. And we're working with our state partners to figure out how to move things forward. The other reason that we're starting our land use efficiencies now is not only did we need to get through that appeal process and see how LCDC responded to it, but we also needed to adopt our PROS Plan because that's one of our critical land use efficiencies. And we wanted to get through that process because that will be, as we'll go through tonight, you'll see that's kind of a determining piece of what we're doing. So, we're starting our land use efficiencies now. We've amended these deadlines to that June 30 deadline. We are now internally having a deadline of September 2025 to get the land use efficiencies work done. And then based on what comes out of that, if we do still have land need, we'll do our UGB alternatives analysis and amendment to try and get a final draft in for public hearing process starting at January 1, 2026. So, very tight timeframe in which to get this work done. I'm feeling pretty good about the land use efficiencies work, though, getting us to a place where we probably won't have a lot of additional need for a UGB amendment. What I want to share with you tonight to sort of set up this discussion is with land use efficiencies, you have the choice as a local municipality to decide what efficiency measures you want to implement based on what you believe is best for McMinnville. So, when I got to McMinnville eight years ago, I was often told by people, "We can't expand our UGB. The state law won't allow it." There had been sort of this discussion, it's taking place here locally, about what we had to do or didn't have to do based on state law or state values. And I think there was some misinformation or it was heard the wrong way. But yes, you can amend your UGB. You're supposed to amend your UGB if you have the need for the land to meet your growth principles. So, we walked through that process already. With land use efficiencies, what you're going to find is we'll give you a list of different efficiencies to consider and evaluate. You do not have to do all those land use efficiencies. You can decide what's the best efficiencies for McMinnville in terms of how you feel McMinnville wants to grow into the future. Those are your choices to make. You'll get some pressure to make certain choices as we go through the dialogue. But I wanted to make sure you understand it's really a local choice as to how you proceed forward. You have to do the evaluation, though, and talk about the different land use efficiencies and what's best for McMinnville. So, I always want to share with you how the work you're looking at meets your city council strategies based on the MacTown 2032 Strategic Plan. This particular work achieves your goal of both housing and growth and development character and is actually one of the actions identified in the planning document itself. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth. So, she can, Elizabeth and Beth will walk you through a PowerPoint. The PowerPoint has information in it for you. And then discussion points. We're looking for feedback from you on how to proceed with some of the work so that we can bring it back to you at a future date for review.
Excellent. Great. Thank you so much, Heather. And thank you, Mayor and councilors and members of the Planning Commission and staff for being here tonight. Pleasure to join the project team. As Heather said, Elizabeth Decker with Jet Planning, working with Echo Northwest on these long-range planning initiatives. So, tonight, we have a three-act play for your enjoyment. Three broad areas to discuss as we move into the land use efficiency measures. Give you a bit of an overview. Heather's done a lot of that already. Talk about some potential measures that have been identified to date. And then particularly, because I like reading code and writing code, what I'm bringing to you tonight to move the conversation forward is looking at some initial code analysis and getting some initial feedback that'll help guide the work to address any potential changes in the code that could help inform the efficiency measures. So, certainly hoping this can be a real work session and an opportunity for discussion. Any clarifying questions as you go along? If you want to just chime in with those at a good stopping point? And then the more substantive discussion points, I'll highlight a few areas of, you know, this is really something where we're looking for your feedback on. And then have an opportunity at the end for sort of a broader discussion to pull those themes together. But definitely here to hear from you as well as to share what we're learning. So, project context here. We are working on these two interrelated housing production strategies and land use efficiency measures. They're happening in parallel. You've been working with Beth and Echo Northwest on the housing production strategy so far. And now we're moving into the land use efficiency measures. Some of the initial phases with the HNA and the EOA, some initial challenges have been addressed. And so particularly with the efficiency measures, we're looking to respond to the identified land deficits for housing, industrial, and commercial. So, these processes are related but separate in terms of what implementation measures come out of the two different products. But all together, they're helping address long-range planning in McMinnville. All right. And then, you know, another way to think of how it is all coming together in the broader project schedule. Heather mentioned working on analyzing housing needs, developing the housing actions through the housing production strategy work that has been going on and is coming forward for consideration this spring. And meanwhile, although it's listed as number two, we're getting started on these land use efficiency measures now, happening in parallel with steps three and four. So, what is the difference between housing planning strategies and land use efficiency measures? One of the main things to point out is the timeframe difference. Housing planning strategies are actions that are implemented over an eight-year timeframe. Although a lot of the land use efficiency measures do have to do with housing because there's an identified housing land deficit in the McMinnville UGB, they're both related to housing. But land use efficiency measures need to be steps that can be taken and adopted as part of that UGB consideration process, which has a statutory deadline of March of 2026. And so, just thinking about some of the strategies, what can be done in this immediate timeframe? That is one characteristic that distinguishes the land use efficiency measures. HPS actions are also a much broader range of strategies. So, they can be land use and code reforms, certainly. But they can also be programs and policies, financial incentives, partnerships, working with a local housing authority, things that wouldn't necessarily show up in terms of getting more homes or more businesses or more jobs onto the existing land that are just more specifically about efficiency. Housing planning strategies are also helping to expand, whatever the barriers are that are identified in McMinnville to housing, for housing of all income levels. So, whatever the housing needs are identified in the HNA, the HPS is working to address that. In particular, there is an added focus on supporting development of housing that is affordable but is not exclusive to housing that is affordable. HPS strategies address the full spectrum of housing needs. When we move over to the land use efficiency measures, they're just a lot more targeted on how land can be used efficiently to address that deficit as part of the statutory process to consider UGB amendments and are broader by looking at both residential, industrial, and commercial. So, a lot of the land use efficiency measures that have to do with residential could be, you know, potentially housing production strategies. But not all housing planning strategies could be land use efficiency measures if you think about it as a Venn diagram. When we look at what could be a good land use efficiency measure, what are things to consider? They're primarily land use, so mapping strategies and code-related strategies. So, on the land use side, we have some lovely maps to share about some opportunities for rezoning, upzoning, area planning that really are just about using those acres that are already in the UGB to meet a variety of land uses that are identified. And then the zoning code piece that we're coming in with the land use efficiency measures are tools like adjusting the existing density, either to add more maximum density or introduce a minimum density. Flexibility with lots of sizes. Those kinds of tools can add efficiency under the definition of an efficiency measure to allow more homes to be used on the existing land. And on the commercial side, the industrial side, there can be different strategies, adjusting some of the land uses or other development standards in those zones like that can help increase the job density of some of those uses and use that land. So, you all have been here longer than I have. You probably know why we're getting into the need for land use efficiency measures. There's been one whole cycle of long-range planning that kicked off with the 2003 UGB amendment and was not fully acknowledged until 2021. So, the city's been working on long-range planning for a very long time. And after that plan was acknowledged, the city immediately began planning for the next 20-year cycle. So, that's where into this 2021 to 2041, the sequential UGB amendment, working towards that March 1, 2026 deadline. And why are we doing long-range planning at all? You know, not only does the city ask, or does the state require it to be done for all Oregon municipalities, but the effects are felt locally, right? This is your community. And it shows up in all the different ways that land is used, particularly with the housing supply and seeing that the limited land supply within the existing city limits and some challenges to developing housing has led to a deficit of a variety of housing types and making homes more expensive and land more difficult to find for housing development, which all in all just adds up to more families having more trouble finding the homes that they need. So, Heather talked through this a little bit. There's three steps to the sequential UGB process. We are on step two. And also, when we think about what is required for efficiency measures, this one's a unique aspect of state law. I feel like we've been hearing a lot how there are very specific requirements of what state law says that cities must do. And this isn't like that. This is a more broad area of state law. It's really about a good faith effort for the city to go through the analysis and really consider, you know, what are some measures that make sense for our community that add some land use efficiencies that can help address the unmet land needs? But there is no, like, this isn't about balancing the budget. You don't have to get to zero on this. So, it's really important that the city take the time to consider what strategies align with the overall council goals, the community priorities, other long-range planning priorities. And a lot of the options are just sort of generally good planning in line with that, help to advance the city goals. They don't need to be, you don't need to undo 20, 40, 50 years of work in order to find an efficiency of, you know, one acre here or there. It's really about a good faith effort and then seeing where that gets you. And the good news is a lot of efforts are already underway. Addressing some changes within the framework plan can add a lot of capacity. The changes to the parks' level of surface, level of service has identified over 100 acres, 127 acres. And when we look at the residential land supply, there's a 202 acre deficit. So, you know, that's a huge chunk of it right there. Park land, the remand there identified some additional acres. And then from there is where we'll pick up, looking at some code measures to look at additional efficiencies.
Can I ask a question?
Please do.
Deficit for looking for land for housing. Have we, so the county is looking at moving the fairgrounds, which is 27 acres within the UGB. And then 36.6 acres, I believe, at Public Works right next to it. Is that something that would be thought of in this process? Discussing rezoning it. And I know there's industrial, so it'd be a mixed use is what I'm understanding. Housing closer to Lafayette Avenue, which is across the street from additional housing right now, and commercial more as it gets towards industrial land? But that, to me, is a pretty good thought of opening up some land within the UGB.
Yeah. So, and it's a great example. So, for the land use efficiencies piece of it, that we'll be looking for examples like that, I believe we need to have the rezone done as part of our work by March 1, 2026. So, it would be whether or not the county's willing to commit to that action and going through it. We would need the commitment to go to get it through a land use process probably by September. And we would want to have some discussion as to whether that meets our code requirements for location of residential land as well. But that's a great example of sort of the process we're going to take as we look at different land use efficiencies around the city. And we also have commercial land need deficits that we need to fill and industrial land need deficits. So, any property that may be changing its current purpose that would be available for a discussion about what should its future purpose be could fit any of those buckets as we go through that process.
And I would like to turn it over to Beth Goodman to present on some of the work and strategies that have been identified to date.
So, hi there. This evening, can everybody hear me okay? I'm going to assume that you can.
Yes, Beth, we can. Sorry.
All right. So, we've talked about these things before. So, what you've done to date, this is a very brief summary of it. There's a lot more. Is obviously you have your Affordable Housing Committee that's helping with homelessness and low-income housing need. In 2019, you worked with Echo Northwest to develop a housing strategy. Some of the actions in that strategy have been completed. Some of those are, in some cases, land use efficiency measures. So, you've done things like develop your R5 zone as part of this project, either through the HPS or through the land use efficiency measures. You may be identifying more land than expected to zone for R5. So, these things are really connected with each other. You've implemented a construction excise tax. That would be a housing production strategy, generally speaking. You'll be deciding, if you haven't already, how to spend your construction excise tax revenues to support housing. You've done a fair bit of area planning in the Three Mile Lane area, the Fox Ridge Road area plan. And you're working on the Southwest area plan. There are a lot more actions in the 2019 study that you've already accomplished that we're not necessarily mentioning here. So, if we go on to the next slide. So, part of what we need to do as we're identifying land use efficiency measures is make sure that we're getting them consistent and not having them both as land use efficiency measures and as HPS actions. So, it's possible there may be a little bit of movement. Where do we keep a particular action? Do we keep it in the HPS if it's going to be accomplished sometime over the next eight years and not adopted by that 2026 date that Heather just talked about? So, you've got growth planning, reassigning the acres of park land in urban holding, zoning more to R5. One or both of those may well be more of an HPS action. I think the assigning the acres of park land is probably going to be considered a land use efficiency measure. So, looking at land within the existing UGB to rezone, some of that might be accomplished.
Beth, just a moment. The mayor has a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One of our councilors has a question. Councilor Genoa?
Thank you very much, Mayor. On that list of things you just mentioned, zone more for our land for R5, is there an acreage requirement for that? Or is that just kind of a desire going forward?
It's a potential desire. I believe your UGB expansion said that there would be, I can't remember, Heather, if it's 35 or 37 acres of land?
Yeah. So, we already have identified a certain number of acres of land to be R5 based on our previous UGB amendment that we just went through. So, that's booked and calculated in our framework plan and adopted as part of our comp plan. So, the action, the action for the UGB amendment was adopting the framework plan where we made the commitment to zone that land in the UGB expansion areas. What we can do with this UGB amendment that we're working on now is go in and say, you know what? Maybe it's more than 36 acres of R5 land in the UGB expansion areas. And we amend our framework plan to say it's 72 or whatever it is, right? And so, that's creating a second land use efficiency of more land for R5.
So, I guess my question is, so this is not a mandate coming down. This is what we want going forward?
Yes. And again, that's why I said it's a local value choice. So, we're currently in dialogue with a public hearing process right now at the Planning Commission. And some of the dialogue has been you have too much concentrated apartment projects contiguous with each other. And so, you know, as we talk through R5 land in the UGB expansion areas, we're going to want to be conscientious of what does that mean in terms of over acreage, where we're placing it? How much is concentrating in different places? Those are all local value decisions to make in terms of how we want to grow.
And so, think of these as coulds. We're not at the will stage of the housing production, housing production strategy. But these are still things that the city could do. And through developing the HPS and over the next couple of months, we'll identify the actions that the city is saying it will be doing in its housing production strategy. And the details of doing all of that will happen over the next eight-year period. So, looking for land within your existing urban growth boundary to rezone for higher intensity, maybe you're upzoning some land to allow, you know, instead of R1, maybe you upzone it to R2 or R4 to R5. Those could be land use efficiency measures if they're identified right now, such as the fairgrounds, and I think it was a Public Works facility, if they were happening over this next year. Otherwise, those kind of things might well be in the housing production strategy category. You're developing area plans, like the Southwest area plan. That's obviously something that will happen over the next eight years. I'm not saying that you'll develop all of your area plans over that period. We haven't actually discussed how many of those area plans are expected to be developed over that period. But your housing production strategy would talk about that. And then your infrastructure and public facilities planning that supports residential growth, that kind of thing, will be in the housing production strategy, we think. And then you've got various incentive programs that could be in there, like partnering with community land trusts to build long-term affordable homeownership option, looking at opportunities for identifying land that could be used for affordable housing, whether that's publicly owned land that's surplus use right now or something else. Considering the multiple-unit property tax exemption program that supports development of multifamily housing that is affordable at certain income levels. Looking at your system development charges and scaling them to size of units or offering deferrals. So, instead of having the SDC paid at the time of the permit, have it paid before the, I forget the exact period you were looking at, Heather, but it was before the certificate of occupancy is issued so that the developer doesn't have to carry the costs of the system development charges on their construction loan. So, they're able to carry it in a different way. Looking at implementing a fee for demolition of affordable housing. Those are all things that we've talked to you in one way or another about as potential housing production strategy actions. Are there any questions before I go on? This is mostly not about these things. Okay. Then I think we'll go on to the next one. So, initial land use efficiency measures. I'm going to hand off this to Heather in a few moments. But broadly speaking, we've identified some ways of looking at rezoning and redesignated land that would happen before March 2026. Looking at the land that's a reduction in park land in your UGB expansion area and changing your framework plan to account for that as land that would be used for housing in the future. Looking at efficiencies in your area planning, like in the Industrial Innovation Campus, which would Looking at efficiencies in your area planning, like in the industrial innovation campus, which would be about 160 acres. Looking at a higher job density than you're currently planning on, which could address your unmet industrial land need. Looking at increasing residential densities in the Three Mile Lane area plan and incorporating diverse housing types into the Fox Ridge area plan. So these are some things that I think are under consideration. And then in progress, identifying land use efficiencies in the zoning regulations. That'll be informed by the code analysis that Elizabeth will be doing. And then also incorporating diverse housing types into the Southwest area plan. Heather, I'd like to hand it off to you to continue that discussion.
Sure, thank you. So what we want to sort of highlight here is there are some steps we've already taken over the last couple of years that are, that we can use as land use efficiencies for meeting our land need. And then there are some processes in play right now that will identify future efficiencies. But just to sort of share with you some of the things we've already done. So those discussions we had about parkland and adopting the PROS plan and the reduction of acres in the framework plan for parks in the UGB expansion areas, that all of a sudden freed up 127 acres in the UGB expansion areas to be reassigned, if you want to think of it that way. And then the 44 acres that we added to our parkland inventory, so we already have it, we don't need it. So that created a surplus in our land need of 44 acres that can also be reassigned, that's in the UGB expansion area. So that's 171 acres that we've already, if you want to think of buckets, we've already put in a bucket over here that we can think about and talk about how to meet our land need with that. Then, and what we do is, because we adopted the framework plan as part of our comprehensive plan map, what we can do is go in, that's an action we can take to create the land use efficiency. We say as a city, we're committed to this much acreage of R5 zoning in the Southwest area plan and it needs to be in the area plan a minimum of that much. And so that's the action to create the land use efficiency. So that's why we keep going through these actions, like when we adopted the PROS plan and amended the framework plan, to sort of create those different legal milestones to get us to the final for March 1. With that said, I wanted to share two that have taken place that we've done in the last couple of years to work towards land use efficiencies to sort of illustrate how this is done in a slightly more subtle way. So we adopted the Three Mile Lane area plan in 2021 after we had acknowledged the previous UGB amendment. So this would be towards the next one. Oh, I'm not controlling this, am I? I keep pushing my button. And in the Three Mile Lane area plan, we actually said we expect these lands at this acreage to be redesignated as residential land or commercial land and rezoned. And that was done specifically to create the land use efficiencies. So we have numbers for that. We've already, so we're filling that bucket up even more. We're saying we are now meeting that land, that housing land use need by adding this much acreage of high-density residential housing based on the adoption of that Three Mile Lane area plan as part of our comp plan. So that's one of the actions. The next one for the Fox Ridge Road area plan, if you look at this and you look to the left where it talks through the type of housing that was required in the framework plan. So the framework plan we adopted said we'll do at least this much housing of high-density housing in this area. And then when we went through the area planning process and adopted the area plan, we adopted more than the minimum that was in the framework plan. So for instance, we said high-density, we're going, our target was 2 acres, we adopted 4.4 acres. For commercial, our target was 1 to 2 acres and we adopted 4.9 acres. All of that adds up, so you keep just adding that into the bucket of land use efficiencies to meet that land need. And that's sort of the planning process on how we go through efficiencies. So now we're in the Southwest area planning process. And one of our discussions for land use efficiencies could be looking at the minimum requirements in the Southwest area plan that we've identified in our framework plan. Do we want to increase any of that? Do we want more high-density housing in that area? And then that would be adopted into the Southwest area plan process. So I just wanted to sort of, we talk about these things as concepts. And I wanted to share with you that these concepts you've actually taken action on in different ways and just not knowing that you're creating land use efficiencies as you're taking those actions. Beth, did you want me to do this slide as well?
Yes, please.
Okay. So some other efficiencies ideas that we've done that came out of our 2019 housing strategy work that never got to the state and is being amended now because the state then decided every city needs to do a housing strategy and they told us how we would do it after we had already done it. But nonetheless, some of the actions in there we've been working on again as part of our overall growth planning work. So one of the actions is evaluating transfer density for protection of natural features. We have in our recommendation to you as city council that we've been working on with the Planning Commission is a transfer of density rights relative to the natural hazards planning. So if we're saying in the natural hazards area, we're going to limit the density to the lower density types of zones there so that we have less people aggregating in the hazardous areas. We're going to allow them to transfer density to other places in the city and to build more there. So that's already underway. We are currently in our public facility planning process, looking at infrastructure capacity and talking about how we support infill within the city and where we want to see higher density development occur within the city and whether our infrastructure capacity can support that. We have had a discussion about looking at minimum residential densities. When we did the missing middle housing work, we changed our residential zones to have minimum lot sizes, which essentially creates a minimum density for those particular zones. And then streamline the zoning code and other ordinances, that's what Elizabeth is going to work her magic on with us. So those are housing strategy actions that are underway that will hit the housing production strategy. There are other actions underway that we can talk about that could be land use efficiency. So I already talked to you about the 171 acres of land that's now, needs to be reassigned in the UGB expansion areas. We've talked about rezoning land within the city limits for housing, especially for the R5 zone. So our residential zones, R1, 2, 3, and 4 are based on minimum lot sizes. And you can do all housing in all those zones except for apartments you can only do in the R4 zone. But essentially what it says is our R4 zone is diluted with lots of different housing products. You can have single-family homes, you can have apartments. And it's actually producing less than what you would want to see for a high-density residential zone. So that's why the R5 zone was created because you can only do apartments in the R5 zone, not the other housing types. So there's been a discussion of we have acreage assigned to R5 zoning in the UGB expansion area. But are there areas within the existing city limits where that might make sense? And we've had discussion here at the city over the years about the R4 zone that sits south of downtown and whether that makes sense to put that into our R5 zone, a high-density residential development zone in our city center. We've comp plan policies that talk about trying to do more high-density in our city center and how it's served with amenities and things like that. So that might be something to look at. It is not developed as a R5 zone. There are single-family homes in that area, there's also apartments in that area. So we want to walk through a discussion of does that make sense? What's the impact and how do we want to move that forward? We also have adopted great neighborhood principles. We've adopted them as principles, we've adopted them as policies, we've adopted them as something you need to respond to in master planning and area planning. But we don't actually have clear and objective standards as to how you meet these principles when someone's putting together a development project. So we're often saying, well, how are we meeting our variety of housing types? Let's kind of guess through that. Really, we need to have clear and objective standards. So putting together a code that gives us clear and objective standards for how to meet those principles will help us with our land use efficiencies and achieve the values we want to achieve as a community. And so that's also on the docket with the work that Elizabeth is doing for us. We've talked about accessible design. So I just learned today that the first, how do they describe it? Baby boomers are entering the stage where most of them are going to be at least 80 years old. Does that sound right? Or the first wave is going to be 80? Anyways, we're going to have a need for aging-in-place housing because assisted living's not going to meet that need. It's going to be a wave that's going to be coming forward in terms of accessibility. And so we've talked about internally at the city, you know, how do we incentivize and promote accessible design? And what that means is people can age in place in their homes and they don't have to transfer to another housing product to stay within their homes. And the other thing within McMinnville, which we have also talked about, is 34% of our population identifies as having a disability in McMinnville, per census data. That's higher than the norm. And so having some sort of incentivization program for accessible design will meet the aging-in-place tsunami that's coming at us as well as responding to our population that identifies with disabilities. And then lastly, we've talked about, and we have it written now into our annexation McMinnville municipal code to be out. We removed annexations from a land use process and put it into this process where it's an annexation agreement with city council. And I've had a discussion about when people want to annex into the city, requiring them to provide a certain amount of affordable housing to meet our housing need, whatever it is at that time. So if it's affordable housing or executive housing, remember, we focus a lot on affordable housing, but our housing need is across all income spectrums. We hear from our employment industry that our higher-end jobs, people are having a hard time filling higher-end jobs here because those people cannot find housing per their choice in our community either, so executive housing. But we've talked about using that annexation agreement to say, if you want to come into the city and develop, we want you to develop, but you're going to need to provide this type of housing and having it written into there. That then will inform their land use application and we'll review that. So those are the things that we've also done since 2019 to sort of set the stage for this discussion of land use efficiencies.
Great, thanks Heather, thanks Beth. So broad background, right? There is a lot of planning efforts going on in McMinnville. And I think the good news is that a lot of acres, a lot of those buckets are being filled or are on their way to being filled as part of this process. And so this next step, as I'm coming in to talk about the code analysis, this is going to be part of it, but you know, if you think of it in terms of overall impact, this is going to have a big impact on the character of future development. But this might not be where you get the majority of your acres. We don't know yet, depends on what the variety of strategies that you identify. But we're doing this code analysis both to identify potential efficiency measures and also for some of the different reasons Heather mentioned, different ways to make the code function better, to implement the city priorities, the great neighborhood principles and pieces like that. So I just want to start by saying, as I'm setting off on a code analysis here, whenever I start, my first step is really to look at what are the community priorities that should be used as a yardstick for this analysis? Every code analysis is different. You know, like I wish that I had this boiled down to a template, but it's not. Every code analysis I do for every community is different because every community has different questions that they're asking about the code in terms of how, like I can't tell you, you know, your code gets a 97 or your code gets a, you know, 73 because there is no real objective measure. There are some pieces we'll talk about. But just to say that we're coming in with a broad question of how is this zoning code working relative to McMinnville's community goals? We know that there's a focus here primarily on residential because there's certainly a need for housing. And there's also increased state legislation about how cities have to zone and regulate housing. So that's certainly going to be a big focus, but there's also additional focus on commercial and industrial. I know that part of this analysis, because it's part of the efficiency work, is that, you know, I'll be looking for what code standards have a significant impact on efficiency. You know, where a change could actually change how many homes can be accommodated on how many acres. Also, some of that industrial job density can address that. But there's other priorities and metrics that we can add into this analysis as well. So certainly looking at regulatory compliance because there are a variety of state laws that address this. There's specific rules on childcare, for example, or definitions of family and occupancy. So certainly can review all of that. Clear and objective language is another statutory requirement for residential development. So that's something that I'll be paying attention to in the audit. But then also the more city-specific metrics, like looking at more effective ways to implement community priorities like the great neighborhood principles as well as locally understanding what have been some regulatory obstacles to development. You know, maybe it's having multiple types of review or not the right review pathway that fits the project being proposed or standards that say one thing here and one thing in another place. But I guess, you know, I wanted to take some time now to ask you, as you set off on a code analysis, like what questions do you have about the code? Do you want me to be able to come back and tell you how the code is performing?
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
One, how is the code defining affordable housing? And what is our current stock of affordable housing? Is it only programmatic affordable housing or is it a benchmark of economics? That's the first question that I have for code. And the second question is really unrelated, but as we're filling these buckets, do we have to be concerned about non-conforming use? And things that are not in the new zone that we want but are going to likely be there for a while in a different type? Is that still filling the bucket? Are we just looking at acreage of new zones or the types of zoning or the type of use that we're using?
I'll start to answer that latter question, which is, I believe those issues are mostly addressed through the buildable lands inventory. And if a parcel is fully committed, you know, whether it's approved, you know, an existing permitted use or a non-conforming use, that it is not counted as acres that would then be added into, you know, whatever the regulatory changes are. But Beth, do you have anything to add to that about non-conforming uses in the BLI?
I don't really think I have a whole lot to add to that about non-conforming uses in the BLI now.
I think I might follow up. So commissioner, was your question what happens to existing uses today that are on the ground? And we come in and do a land use efficiency measure which impacts the zoning and then makes them non-conforming?
No, my question is more, how do we fill that bucket if we know the use of it is now non-conforming? Does that acreage still count in filling that bucket?
And so, and we talk about things in terms of buildable lands inventory and otherwise. I'm going to use an example. So let's pretend there's an area in town which is zoned R4 today and we think that it makes sense to zone it R5. And there are lots in that area that are an acre with a single-family dwelling unit on it. We then, we take that one acre with one dwelling unit on it and assign whatever the assignment, I make this up because I don't remember the number. But let's pretend our R4 zone is trending at 10 units per acre. So we would then say nine units can go on this one acre because it only has one and it trends at 10. And that's kind of how we do the math for the bucket, so to speak.
Gotcha.
Does that help answer your question?
That helps, thanks.
There's a little more nuance to it where we leave a larger part of the existing parcel. So it's, you know, an acre total, but we assume a quarter acre stays with the existing house so that additional dwelling units would be applied to like .75. So it does account, I apologize for not being able to answer the question before, for the fact that there'll be some non-conforming uses, some existing uses that stay without, you know, over-assuming a lot more density on that lot than might be reasonable.
So if we go through this and we plan for R5 and we get 20 years down the road, can we change that designation later?
Yeah, so I mean, just like you'd be changing it now, if it hasn't developed. So let's play it out. We zone some land R5, 5, 10 acres. We see it developed at this higher density. We decide that 5 to 10 acres of R5 land at that density doesn't really make sense in McMinnville, it doesn't feel right. We can go back and revisit how we've zoned the land otherwise. There will become a time, and I didn't ask Bill to join us for this work session, so I'm now regretting that. But there will become a time, if, you know, when we zone land and we create value and opportunity on that land and then we take that opportunity away, it does become an issue of considerate taking. So we'll have to do analysis like that when we're making changes, but.
Anybody else?
I have a question. When you're reviewing.
When you're reviewing the code, are you also reviewing it for clarification and duplication? And it's, so it's part of what you're doing, cleaning it up, so to speak?
Yeah, I like to call those housekeeping.
Okay.
So yeah, I, I sort of lumped that under reviewing regulatory obstacles, conflicts, so.
And then I've seen in some code requirements before that it lists certain business uses that are allowed or disallowed, some of which are ancient?
Yes, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Stagecoach shops, stops.
Yeah, I, I was thinking about one, there's for photographic reproduction.
I've seen that one.
Not, not a lot of demand for that one.
So that is the kind of thing that also gets cleared up. Because I've seen it where you're looking at it and you're like, okay, well, if I, I'm allowed to do this, but I can't do this, what, what is this thing anymore? You know, what's the modern equivalent of that?
Yes, and I, I think we'll, you know, be talking, the, the initial emphasis for this code analysis is looking at efficiency measures and potential housing production strategies. That's sort of the first pass through and then we'll want to refine to, you know, so there's so much in a code that can be flagged, right? And so thinking about how we allocate some additional resources on the second pass through the code.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Gary?
So when I look at how is zoning code working relative to community goals, one, I just, I just pulled up the first page of the zoning and, and was reading through all these things and one that jumped out to me, and I don't know how to ask the question or, or give direction, but, and in the vein of sort of the, the looks right, I could read the code and it looks right, I don't, I'm not that good, but it, so in the vein of feels right, I know in my experience, anything with the name planned development has not felt right when I think about how does our code function to what our community wants to see? And so, good luck. I don't know how to provide that direction of, of, of how does, how functional is our planned development overlay? And whether it is or isn't functional, whether it is or isn't anything we can do about it? And it's just too late, the cat's out of the bag. It's been a tool that McMinnville has used with little to no effect on our, achieving our goals. I think this process would do wise to look at that and analyze that tool's function and how it's played out.
Can we, so do you mind? Can we explore that a little bit further, what you think doesn't function? Because we actually shared with Elizabeth, one of our goals is a mixture of, so for great neighborhood principles, a variety of housing types serving a variety of housing incomes. And so getting away from the homogeneous subdivision of 7,000 square foot lots over, you know, down the street. And how do you have a variety of housing, how do you have a variety of lots serving, with a variety of different housing types on it? And in McMinnville, the tool for that is a planned development with average lot sizing. And there's 250 of them in McMinnville. So we were like, that's, that's a tool that we think can help us achieve the principles that we're trying to achieve. But you're saying you think that tool hasn't effectively worked for McMinnville. So I'd love to explore what you think hasn't effectively worked so that she can be looking at it through those lenses.
Yes, that's why I, it was a, hasn't felt right from, from what I've heard as a community perspective. I think it's twofold. One is, it's just a function of the housing market that's going to be provided what it's going to be provided and that's what we're currently getting is something that the community says they don't want. And so maybe there is no code language that will provide a better product in terms of what we hear from the community. Again, this is, this is feels right, community goals, unsubstantiated with words on, on zoning code, but, but from words from the community when these things come through. And the second would be, it, it all always seems to boil down to a trade in, in what are we getting versus what are we giving up? And, and can we zero in on that and come up with a way to better guide that, better guide our ability to say, no, we aren't, we aren't getting enough because this is what we want. And, and it's in all of these documents we're talking about tonight. We, we want as a community to achieve these goals and therefore that development, in order to qualify for a plan development amendment, for a plan development, it needs to give us these things so we can give you that plan development.
Yeah, and I, I think to explore a little further, I'm just putting the conversation on the table, in terms of what the community reacts negatively to, I think in the planned developments, especially the ones we've seen recently in McMinnville, it's where you have the smaller lots, right? So you have, you have higher density housing development occurring in places where it's not a traditional apartment complex. And it's in neighborhoods and you, you see, so let's use Baker Creek North as an example. So you see a lot of smaller lots there, but it also allowed for larger lots and to achieve the density that we're trying to achieve in that underlying zoning, because it allows for the average lot sizing. But I think what I hear from the community is concern about the smaller lots and how densely packed those homes on the smaller lots are.
Smaller lot, smaller lot, single-family residences.
Yeah, so, so what I would want to explore with you as a body and the community is, so if, if, if there is, if people want to achieve more density within the city limits, what does that look like? And then based on what you think that looks like, then we write the code to get there. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Councilor Chinwet?
I had a question that I want to ask in a second, but I want to follow up on that discussion that just took place. What I hear from the community and some of this, let me preface this by saying this, I understand the limitations being put on us by mandates from the state, I get that. But what I hear from the community are smaller lots, smaller streets, less parking. And when you add all that up together, it creates kind of this congested, hard to get around, hard to, hard to park, hard, hard to motivate between communities and then you're packed on top of each other. And that whole combination kind of gives us feeling of track environment that really isn't McMinnville. So I would put all three of those together and say that all three are at issue. And I understand there are some limitations at play there. The question I wanted to ask though is in terms of, and I'm just getting back to my earlier question, are there requirements on, on percentage of a new development that's of a certain size? It has to be this zone or this zone or this zone, other than what we're putting forward within our land use efficiency requirements? In other words, are we, are we required, I'm not necessarily saying this in a negative or a positive, to put that there.
Understanding, yeah.
But are we required to have so many acres of R5? Are we required to have so many acres of whatever in this process?
I'll let Beth also chime in on this, but you're shaking your head. I think that the requirements such as they are, there is no explicit number, there is no formula, but there is coming out of the housing needs analysis, an understanding of what the housing needs are for McMinnville's population going forward and a need to accommodate that housing through a variety of zones and housing types. And so Beth, would you like to add anything to that?
Well, before Beth weighs in, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something, because I, I know Beth needs to play the party line and I'm not going to play the party line. So the housing needs analysis does say, you at McMinnville need housing that meets these types of needs relative to income, right? So you need housing that meets income levels of 30% AMI or less and it goes up, marches up the board and tells us how much we need of each for our future housing product.
For sale products, rental products?
Well, so here we go. This is where I'm not going to play the party line. There's an assumption that density means affordability. There's also an assumption that rental is affordability. And when we went through this most recent housing needs analysis and housing strategy, if you recall, we had a discussion as a community that those assumptions aren't necessarily true. So apartment projects are not just for lower-income households, there are many apartment projects built for higher incomes, so you're not always meeting the need if all your housing for low-income is R4 zoning, right? And then we also made the decision that everybody of every income level should have an opportunity for ownership or rental opportunities. Ownership allows equity in real estate wealth, right? So how, how do we, for McMinnville's purposes, utilize our zoning regulations so that we can meet our housing need that's serving the whole variety of income levels and also allow for rental and ownership opportunities within sort of this, I'll say, sort of older traditional approach of zoning and density leading to affordability when that isn't actually the case?
And I'm going to echo what you both have just said and say, it's not necessarily about a prescribed number of acres in R5 or any other zone. It's more of a holistic look at what your unmet housing needs are, which includes need for housing affordable at, you know, average and below average incomes. And so that ends up being partially about land use, but as much as anything, more about programs. So things like community land trusts and incentives for supporting development of housing that is required to be affordable at some specific income level, et cetera. So that gets more towards some of the housing production strategy actions. And the connection with the zoning is, is a little bit, a little bit like Heather just said. So I'll hop off the, the state's train right there.
Councilor Peralta?
You read my mind, Mayor, thank you. I wasn't sure if I was, or even if this was the correct place for the comment, but.
Mike?
I am so sorry to the people on Zoom that I do that every single meeting. I will try and make a point of speaking into the mic.
I'm just going to change your name to Mike.
So it seems to me that one of the things that you're considering are ownership opportunities that are going to be replacing, say manufactured homes in the community, because we have a lot of those that are kind of aging out. And I appreciate the conversation about concerns related to the small lot, single-family residential. How would we address the code in a way that has us looking at more things like cottage clusters and buildings that go up instead of out with our land? As part of this process?
Yeah, those are certainly aspects of the code that we'll be looking at. I think we'll get into it a little bit here, have some initial observations of the code to share, but exactly where those housing types are permitted and whether the standards currently, you know, that, that say you can do a cottage cluster here, you can do an apartment here, do the standards actually permit the scale and form of development that is envisioned? Or is there an issue there where the standards need to be addressed and amended to better fit the desired types?
And I would also say, so our, all four of our zones allow cottage clusters. Allowing it in your zone doesn't mean the market's responding to it, right? And so if that's a direction that the city wants to go, then we limit what we allow to, you know, to limit the choices that hit the market. That would be a part of it. I think as, as we continue to dialogue this, because it's interesting, we see this at the Planning Commission at public hearings all the time, you know, people are used to their own living environment and in McMinnville, it's a lot of single-family homes on, in traditional subdivisions. And to, to then see non-traditional development occurring, so sort of the smaller lot sizes and the averaging that's occurring in some of our planned developments, does not feel comfortable because it's different. But the people who are living in those homes, and I always tell people, go to these neighborhoods and talk to who lives there to see what they think and feel about where they're living, feel grateful to have the opportunity to buy something they can afford because it's on a smaller lot. So, you know, as, as we talk through how we meet our future housing needs, we're talking about future residents living in our community and their living experience and then blending that into our existing community and what makes this place so special. And that's sort of where we find our sweet spot.
Mayor?
I'm curious if, I'm thinking about, I think our first cottage cluster that's just coming on sale now, you know, I think starting at like 900 square feet is, yeah, over $400,000. And I'm curious if we can work into the code some way to encourage, to require, to demand that developers reflect a housing needs analysis that's done every, is that eight years, did you say? So if that's generally up to date, you know, I'm, I know that we are missing housing that's affordable at all different levels, but if I'm thinking back, you know, we are recently determined to severely rent burdened and just housing burden, all, whether it's renting or owning, people are spending too much. And so I think it would be awesome if we could have our developers reflecting on what's happening in this community, you know, in, in a sort of percentage sort of way. If we've got 60% of people that can't afford a, you know, that are making what, $60,000 or, or under that, if I'm remembering correctly? If we can have our housing, as it's being developed, reflect that need, I don't know.
Councilor Gary, did you, oh, Councilor Payne?
Scott was first before me.
Doesn't matter, Elena just stole my thunder. I literally pulled up on Zillow that cottage cluster and yeah, the, the least expensive one is 419,000, 465,000, then 480,000 for a 1,200 square foot cottage, yeah, cottage cluster. So not exactly affordable in my view. And one of the things that I find, or, or I'm asking actually, is in the housing needs analysis, my, my understanding of it is that is simply what we need for the future growth, correct?
I see that Beth has her hand up.
So it is predominantly about what you need for future growth. It also shows your unmet housing needs currently. It's a little hard to, to change your stock of housing sort of midstream. In other words, make a whole bunch of housing that you've already got more affordable unless you have money to do that. So it shows your current unmet housing need, it also shows your future unmet housing need.
Right, so the, the, the thing that it doesn't necessarily really take into consideration is the pressures that our current housing stock has on rental rates and/or home values that I would.
It documents those things.
It documents it, but it doesn't necessarily tell us how many units we would need to either slow or plateau or reverse the cost of housing.
I mean, we have in the past included that kind of analysis. The numbers end up being kind of overwhelming and sometimes they're used in ways that we didn't intend them to be used to, so, so you know, that, that kind of thing is possible. It's also not highly accurate. These are, these are, you know, estimations. And when we look at how much unmet need there is for new housing that's affordable, unless the city has, you know, like I said, quite a lot of money to put towards things like incentives and, and other things that, you know, get developers to build housing that is more affordable. Because you, I don't think that you can, short of inclusionary zoning, which is not a strategy we're going after for various reasons that I can explain, you can't require developers to build housing that is affordable, but you can work with developers in development agreements so that you're giving them something that they want in exchange for housing that is more affordable. What you're trying to do here is align your zoning code with making sure that, that your zoning code doesn't make barriers, create barriers that only allow housing that's expensive to be built.
And I guess I would also say, so it's a supply and demand issue is what controls the market, right? Otherwise, we're buying it down, which is what Beth is talking about. And, and our current housing needs analysis that we're working from, that's, that's at the state, does identify that we were 1,000 units in deficit in 2019. So I'm pretty certain we're more than that today. So I'm pretty certain we're more than that today. And it also identified to be able to make, to be able, we would have to make up that deficit and then to keep a supply in the market so that we're, so that we're at sort of a steady market and demand supply, we would be, we would need to issue 250 housing permits a year, housing unit permits a year. And I've used that metric with people before when I've presented and shown where we're at in terms of our housing permits. We're not close to 250. So we're continuing to build the whole of the deficit. And so by, what we need to do is somehow incentivize more housing supply. That's this discussion. That housing supply is built either on new land or efficiencies within your existing city limits.
Council Payne.
Thank you. Back to the question about, the first question, especially since we've got 19 minutes left, I just want to touch really quick on sort of the, what's working relative to the community goals. I think globally, we're doing a good job of considering the location of parks sort of being centralized and then the vision of more trail opportunities. I'm going to put Council President Broughton on the hot seat for a moment, but I'm curious if this is sort of like the time in the review of zoning and code review to talk about protecting our tree groves. And in terms of zoning, I have significant concerns about really doing a good job of making sure that we're protecting riparian ways and with that, obviously trees and species. But like our zoning map doesn't reconcile with FEMA's maps, which I'm, it probably never will. But I do have concerns about sort of balancing all of this because green space is a community goal, as we well know. And then I do feel like the current zoning of the innovation campus is sort of crippling the eventual development of that. And I understand we're at the mercy of somebody applying for subdividing that property. But yeah, I think that's all I've got related to that question. Thank you.
So we have 15 minutes left.
Yes.
We probably need to continue.
Yeah, so let's talk through a little bit of the zoning specifics. I want to share with you some initial impressions and then try to move through these pretty quickly so that we can spend the last couple of minutes getting some quick reactions about where to continue to look for opportunities. City zoning overview, you've got lots of zones. They're mostly residential zones, commercial or industrial. There's not a lot of mixed use zoning formally on the map. There are some different ways that can get, that can get done as a planned development or some of the areas like the C3 area in downtown there, you know, if you dig into the code, there is some mixing residential uses permitted there. But a lot of this is pretty Euclidean, pretty separated, pretty much based on separation of uses. So looking at those residential uses, as Heather had mentioned, the R1 to R4 zone, all single family, all the middle housing types as well are permitted in all of those zones. The city fully complied with the state requirements for middle housing to permit there. That allows some more flexibility for mixing. Apartments are only permitted in the R4 zone and the R5 zone. The R5 zone is unique, as was mentioned, in that there is no competition with single family and middle housing zones in the R5 because that zone is specifically focused on apartments. So, and that really, right now, the city has seen historically some recent development in the C3, the commercial zone, that's really the higher density residential uses. Hopefully, the R5 gives that a little bit more of a home, a little more of a way for the city to say, these are the areas where we want that type of development. There are additional residential uses permitted in that office residential and C3. And so there are some trade offs there between adding more residential capacity in the commercial zones, adds more residential capacity, potentially can add to a mix and kinds of communities that you want to see, neighborhood nodes and things like that, but could be some trade offs with commercial capacity. On the employment mixed use, as you pointed out earlier this evening, there's a very broad range of commercial and industrial uses listed in very specific detail. So different cities list them in more detail and less detail. For some of those, you know, we can look at the job densities of some of the permitted uses. So on one end, you've got your sort of warehousing, self-storage, those can be pretty few jobs per acre. You can move up into more of an office, research, development, maybe high-end manufacturing. Those can have a lot more jobs per acre. And so we can take a look at what are the range of uses and their associated job densities and does that help you address any of the efficiencies? There are some opportunities to have more of that mix of uses that can be in line with some of the great neighborhood principles. The framework plan identifies these neighborhood activity centers, as I mentioned, in downtown, the city center housing overlay. And then the C3 and OR zones already do allow some residential mixed in with commercials. So it might not look that way on the map, but between that, as well as the 250 planned developments, there are some opportunities to create more of a variety. Where we really get into looking at efficiencies that are going to show up in terms of numbers we can calculate is when we start talking about the scale of residential development. So on the left here, these are the existing minimum lot sizes. You probably know these already. But the R1, R2, and R3 zones, right, are very much focused on single family and middle housing. You know, there's a gradation of lot sizes here. There is no, you know, magical lot size that I can say, this lot size is acceptable, this lot size is not acceptable. That is not what efficiency measures are about. The lot sizes that are in the code are in line with the density targets in the HNA. So that is what I can say, that these lot sizes appear to meet your housing needs. You know, there isn't a lot of difference, I would say, you know, on paper, between the R2 through the R4, but there are opportunities for smaller lots for different types of middle housing or mixing housing types in a planned development. So there's some variety to average lot sizes. One thing that stood out to me though, and again, initial impressions, is that the planned development allows averaging of lot sizes and a variety of things, but there isn't a density bonus. So you can make smaller lots, but you have to make larger lots. And so if, you know, purely from an efficiency lens, there could be an opportunity to add some criteria to a planned development and say, hey, under these circumstances, maybe there's a density bonus, maybe it's more open space, maybe it's the variety of housing, maybe it's the affordable housing. But that's really an opportunity to get creative and think about what the community goals are and what might be, as you mentioned earlier, some acceptable, you know, how to ask for more and get more. So that's sort of on the minimum lot sizes. As we move into the apartment zones, notable step that the city has already taken is to remove the maximum density for apartments in the R4 zone, which also applies to the OR and the C3 commercial zones. So that, right now, that hasn't shown up yet in terms of the data. The HNA has permit data from 2000 to 2018. And so we just haven't seen what effect changing the minimum, or the maximum density in R4 and those related zones will have. But it's certainly an opportunity and we can look at how to forecast that as an efficiency. Looking also at the R5 zone, it does still have a maximum density in the code, 1,500 square feet per unit for apartments. And that translates into about 29 units per acre. And so can consider, you know, that's not that different than the historic densities seen again in that 2000 to 2018 time period in the C3 zone of 31 units. And so maybe 29 is right, but also if you've got the flexibility in the R4, there could be an opportunity there to consider lifting or eliminating the density maximums in the R5 zone as well. And then just, yeah, doing a quick, quick, quick version of this, but happy to answer questions. And then on the flip side, thinking about, are there any minimum densities or another way to regulate that same thing is through maximum lot sizes? And that can affect land use efficiencies. You know, hypothetically, you have 10 acres. If you only build, you know, if, even if you're planning 5,000 square foot lots, but people build one acre lots, you only have 10 homes and you're expecting a heck of a lot more homes. So a minimum density tool, right, can be a tool to get more efficiency, to require more housing to be built that's closer to the minimum lot sizes. Right now, those tools are not in the McMinnville code, but the historic densities, again, that 2000 to 2018 data from the HNA, shows that the historic densities are not that far off from the minimum lot sizes. And so it doesn't, from, again, initial impressions, it doesn't look to me like the R1 through R3 zones, that a minimum density would necessarily get you much more efficiency because folks are already plating those lots pretty close to the existing minimum lot sizes. Where minimum densities could be part of your future conversation is in those R4 and R5 zones. If, the R4 zone in particular has seen a historic average lot size of about 5,514 feet, which is much more in line with the single lot, more the single family detached product and fewer apartments. And so depending on the goals for the R4 zone or what, you know, possibly the R5 is going to supplant that purpose and be the apartment focus, but there is really an opportunity to talk about what is the purpose and the goal for the R4 zone? And could that include a minimum density to try to, you know, both get some efficiency, right, that we can measure in this process, but also just to clarify what the range of housing is that you're hoping to see in those areas with that zone? So that could be a tool there. And that really feeds into a broader question for the community about thinking about the multifamily types and scale. The development and design standards for residential add in the most extensive standards for apartments and identifies these six different types and forms of apartments. The code describes them, but it doesn't have a lot of requirements that, you know, this type has to be in the city center and this type has to be in the R4 zone. And so right now, there's a lot of description without necessarily translating that into regulations and that could be fine, but if there is more specificity that the community is looking for, that's something that we can consider. Things like adjusting the height limits, the densities, some of the other development and design standards there. So...
So we only have a couple minutes left.
Yep, I know, that's why we are wrapping up. Dimensional standards, you're basically doing pretty well here. I highlighted, things like height and parking and open space are some of the bigger things that can sort of take up land, so to speak. These are levers that you can consider addressing that could show up as efficiency measures. Again, it's not to say that any of these have to be addressed, but they are opportunities.
Quick question, is there a way we can also play around with setbacks? I know with, okay, that would be something of interest just because I just, the housing along Baker Creek, you know, if we could have adjusted for some of the setbacks and some of those large, some of those houses could have larger shared yards. And having a shared side yard of three feet or three feet or five feet or five feet just seems like a waste of space. So just something like that.
Yeah, we can look at that. Then on the design standards, I think what's really important about the design standards is that they're not necessarily going to get you more efficiency, but they are really going to change the flavor of that efficiency, right? The design standards are where you get the character of the community that you're looking for. So the big challenge with design standards, you've probably heard it, you'll get tired of me saying the words clear and objective, having that option. Process requirements, that's sort of, again, not where we're going to get efficiency that we measure in acreage, but maybe efficiency in the more general sense of, you know, how to help people get through the process and build the housing that they want. And so to summarize, these are some of the potential code-related efficiency measures that stood out to me in an initial review, just to say, these are things that could, you know, show up in terms of acres you can add to the bucket based on your existing code. And we'll be looking for your feedback about whether these are levers that you're interested to pull and to explore further. So we'll be working through some phases and then it's up to you to discuss for the next four minutes.
Do we have another option to get you all this other information besides four minutes?
Yeah, so certainly email myself or Evan if you have any sort of ideas. The ideas could be code related, the ideas could be like what you brought up, Mayor, in terms of land that you're aware of or there's discussions underway. And we'll, we'll put those on the list and work with Elizabeth and Beth on those. We are due to come back to you in a joint work session with the Planning Commission and the City Council on July 16th with some of our findings for land use efficiencies. So I guess what I'd be interested in hearing from you somehow, and we don't have enough time, is what are deal breakers that you don't want us to spend any time on?
Is it possible at all to see those, get those slides, copy of those slides?
Yeah, we can, we'll send, it should have gone out, but I'm not sure if it went out to the Planning Commission to go out to them as well. Yes, you have a copy of them.
Can we...
Maybe I'll look to schedule some time in the future with you as a body to find out if there's deal breakers and we can work with the Planning Commission on that as well.
Okay.
If that's helpful.
Yes. All right, Zach, or excuse me.
In the quick list you went through residential parking standard examination, have you or can you look at commercial parking standards and regulations? We use that ideally for residential and we use it for commercial, but I think the future of transit is pushing less parking intensive and be great, less land chewed up with that, that'd be great.
Okay, if there's nothing else, press that out.
I have one thing. The city of McMinnville is obviously not getting why they need the planned areas, but are there any examples of any cities within the state of Oregon that are doing this well and actually seeing benefit? I don't need you to answer that because we can't, but who's doing this well?
Plan development specifically or residential development?
Residential, bringing down the cost of housing without upsetting people and also traffic.
That's a very small ask.
I, yeah, I know.
Just write that code.
That's what I'm asking you to bring next time.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we would like that solution provided to us in an email by the end of tonight.
Okay, I'm going to call the...
No problem.
Meeting adjourned at 6:57. We're going to take just a couple minute break and we'll be back for the City Council.
So are you still working in the wine industry? Is that your profession? You're a farmer, right? Okay. So do you, so you grow them after a year, then produce and, oh, that's cool. Sell them or do you just wholesale them kind of?
I didn't create one.
You and Elizabeth are going to figure out the solution?
Executive Director of Profit, represents private law firms that do public defense. I mean, it's, it's interesting, it is interesting. It's, you know, I mean, it's basically, right now, I'm spending a lot of time lobbying the legislature to make changes to fix public, which they broke two years ago. Well, I mean, it's interesting to me, but most people are like, oh, that makes my eyes glaze over. I enjoy it. I'm not out on a farm, working in fresh air and like that. I wish, I developed kind of a passion for that, not farming and ag, but restoring native plants, which I've done at my own kind of small property in town. But I mean, I spent like three years, like almost all of the COVID time, clearing out blackberries and replanting. So I've developed a love for that. That would be way more interesting to me if I could get paid to do that rather than lobby. I'm envious. And I will say, like, it is kind of fun to work in a job that I do now where...
Recording in progress. Recording in progress.
Where you know in some way actually change things, you know, because the law has changed.
Barbara, how are you doing?
Hopefully whoever owns it will now let it go.
Evan, good work up there.
Thanks for your thoughts.
Yeah.
I was taking, taking a lot of good notes.
Councillors, can we have you come back? It's time to start. Dan, do you want a? Dan, do you need something to drink?
No. I was just going to come chat you for a minute.
You can do it right now. I will now call the City Council meeting to order at 7:02. Your recorder Claudia, can you do roll call?
Counselor Cunningham.
Here.
Counselor Tokolski.
Present.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Present.
Counselor Payne, still here. Counselor Geary.
Good evening.
Council President Peralta.
He's here, he's getting dinner.
He's present in the building, but not here physically right now. Mayor Morris.
Here.
Thank you. And if you're able to stand, please stand and do the pledge with us, and I'm going to call Counselor Tokolski to lead us in the pledge. So now it's time for community members to speak if they'd like. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. Comments will be limited to four minutes per person for a total of 32 minutes. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature or chat feature and send a chat to the city recorder team. Once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. Please announce your name and the city you live for the record. We will start with those who have pre-registered. And Claudia, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, and before we start, I do want to state for the record that we received a letter in the mail. I have forwarded that to all councillors, and it will be made part of the amended packet posted tomorrow.
Thank you.
First, we have Stacy, I think it's Mayhew.
Mayhew. Good evening, Stacy.
Madam Mayor, councillors.
Can you put a mic? Thank you.
I'm not sure if it's appropriate, but I did bring a little map of what I'll be talking about. Is it appropriate to hand this around, or is that allowed? Okay, my name is Stacy Mayhew. I've lived in McMinnville for 22 years, and this evening I'd like to talk to you a little bit about Quarry Park, or what is affectionately known as the forest off of Second Street, especially in regards to green spaces being a goal of this city. Quarry Park is this wonderful little beautiful space off of Second Street, and if you look at your map, you'll see Second Street, and then this is Calvary Chapel over here, just to kind of get you orientated. It's 11 acres of green space off of Second Street, and it's right in the middle of a highly-developed neighborhood. Back in 1968, the state put this 11 acres up for sale for $6,000, which was a deal even in 1968, but they had a stipulation in that that was, this 11 acres was absolutely not to be developed. So the local Kiwanis Cub came and planted seedlings of Douglas fir, cedar, and pine trees, and today, it is a beautiful, mature, green space right in the middle of the chaos of a busy neighborhood. That Visit McMinnville would like to make into a BMX park. A couple years ago, the park and rec department did a study, and Quarry Park, I will note, was not on that study. But basically, they were asking what people in McMinnville would like to see in their parks and recreation. Number one, with 12.1%, was walking and biking. You can walk and bike and hike at Quarry Park. As a matter of fact, my husband and I were just up there, and you can see my children, who are all in their 30s, they were raised, riding their bikes in Quarry Park. If you want to be a little adventurous, there's a little bit more adventure hiking and biking, or you can take a leisurely stroll. You'll see that you can, you can enter here off of Second Street, and then there's also three entrances around the neighborhood. You can walk up through the trees, or you can just stroll around the green spaces there. But you can ride, and you can walk the junior high and high school cross-country teams, all run cross-country at Quarry Park. Number two, with 10.2%, was they wanted to sit and picnic and gather. And you can see in the green space here that you can do all of those things. You can throw a football, you can throw a frisbee, you can have a picnic, you can go down to Third Street and grab your picnic, and you can come up to Quarry Park and enjoy a view of the city, which is very rare anymore. Number four was an open grass area, which you can see Quarry Park has. Number seven was a natural place that supports wildlife habitat. We have seen blue herons. When this basin fills up with water, it's full of frogs that the herons hunt. There's owls, we've seen Cooper's hawks, pine ciscans. And when my husband and I were last there, there was a herd of deer just sunning themselves in the sun, which you can also do in Quarry Park as a human. And then number 11 was they wanted a place to take their dogs. And so this is a wonderful place to take your dogs, whether it's, you know, a little Shih Tzu, or a big giant dog that wants to really go on a more aggressive hike with you. The thing about Quarry Park is it's very inclusive currently. You can do, anybody in McMinnville can go to Quarry Park, you can park, I usually park here off of Second Street, but Calvary Chapel is very generous with their parking, as long as it's not at, how many?
Sorry, your four minutes are up.
Oh, I'm done, okay.
I even added a minute to these.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Is there something that you could submit to us, though?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. And can I just close with one word? That I would like to see the city prefer the people of McMinnville instead of a possible tourist.
Thank you.
Next, we have Barbara Boyer.
Welcome.
Thank you. Barbara Boyer, and I don't live in the city, I live in rural McMinnville. So, Mayor Morris, Council President, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to give public testimony this evening. So I am the Chair of the Solid Water Conservation District Board, and that is who I am representing this evening. Yamhill Solid Water Conservation District was disappointed to hear of the city, of McMinnville City Council approving amendments to the West Hills subdivision in December of 2024, which was originally approved for development in 2017. This approval will eliminate approximately 50 acres of mixed woodland, primarily Oregon white oak, which has been identified as a rare and declining habitat and strategy, and a strategy habitat for federal and state governments. According to information printed in the News Register, at least 900 trees will be cut down in order to provide room for a new housing subdivision. Yamhill SWCD has spent the last decades partnering with groups including U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, Greater Yamhill Watershed Council, the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron, the U.S. Department of Agricultural Natural Resource Conservation Services to conserve oaks on private land in Yamhill County. We have been awarded two subsequent grants under the NRCS Regional Conservation Partnership Program of $2 million each, and were recently awarded an additional $6.6 million to improve the restoration, sorry, I lost my place, to improve the restoration work which will preserve these diminishing habitat types. The majority of this habitat has been lost due to development, including rural conversions to more profitable crops or to urban development. It is estimated that between 3% and 10% of this historic habitat remains in the Willamette Valley today. Over 200 native species of oak obligates, meaning they depend on Oregon white oak for their continued survival. We are disheartened to learn that the city of McMinnville is willing to eliminate this rare habitat and cause a decline of so many native species. As Councillor Sal Peralta stated, white oak are slow-growing, it takes 100 to 300 years for them to flesh out their canopy. Some of these trees were here before the first white settlers came to Oregon. Their culture, their natural significance of the trees can't be overstated, noting that 97% of Oregon white oak has been removed over the last 100 years. Once they are gone, they will never come back in our lifetime or the lifetimes of our grandchildren's children. The action directly contradicts what the Yamhill SWCD and its partners, including Yamhill County residents, have been working on for the past decade. We urge the city of McMinnville to complete their analysis of identified habitat and those values to the communities versus conversion to development. We hope that this will result in ordinances which will protect Oregon white oak within the city limits and will prevent future loss of this critical habitat. At the very least, developers should be required to mitigate losses and to be required to retain some amount of habitat in exchange for development. We would support a moratorium on new approvals for development of these areas identified by the city until the analysis and ordinance have been completed. We believe the city of McMinnville should follow the lead of state, federal, and tribal agencies who have all identified this habitat as essential to our native wildlife population. Yamhill SWCD provides technical assistance to anybody interested in conservation projects relating to natural resources. We are available to the city's staff, department, council members, and land development companies to strategize on best practices. Thank you for your consideration and for supporting Yamhill County residents who care about Oregon white oak.
Thank you. Good timing. I didn't even practice that. Thank you. Thank you. Claudia?
Next, we have Valerie Anton.
Welcome.
Good evening, Valerie Anton, and I live in McMinnville, can you hear me?
Bend it down just a little, there you go.
There, okay.
There you go.
I'm a little nervous.
That's okay.
I apologize for coming late to the table regarding this proposed hillside subdivision. I am very lucky to live in an ideal flat area of the West Hills. I had just recently learned about this proposed hillside subdivision from the News Register articles written by Scott Unger. I am adamantly opposed to the expanded hillside subdivision that was approved years ago. We are in the midst of a dramatic climate change. Consider the recent fire tragedy in the Los Angeles area and how the climate is impacting our open space, not to mention our dependence on dwindling water resources. I think that it is highly incompatible for any homes, and especially the projected 392 dwellings, to be built on this beautiful hillside, replacing these magnificent groves of Oregon oak and Douglas fir trees on which many species of wildlife depend. In my opinion, there is no monetary value that can be placed on these groves as regarding the mitigation $500 fee for each tree that is cut down. I have walked up the hill to the end of Second Street and have seen families of deer grazing there. I love to see the wildlife in their native habitat. Please consider the rights of nature and all wildlife. I think that we, as a community, should be able to cast our votes on whether or not this development should go forward. Thank you for allowing me to voice my opinion.
Thank you.
Next, we have Roshana Shaukli.
Roshana Shaukli, McMinnville. I'm in agreement with, and I don't remember her name, speaking about Quarry Park. For a BMX to be built there, and I went to the meeting that we had a couple weeks ago, it would completely redo the whole park. And I guess it's, it's Parks Department and the, anyway. It just doesn't seem to me that the money that would be spent to redo that park as a BMX would really bring, I mean, if it's specifically for BMX and just kids wanting to, you know, go crazy on their bikes, you're going to have a lot of money spent for very few people who would actually use that facility, it seems to me. And I looked, and I think it's Tooleton already has a BMX park that's really quite, you know, put together, and the kids could go there. And I've lived here for 42 years now, and I've been up at the park, at Quarry Park, and it's so special. It's just very unique, and I would love to see it be developed a little bit more as a walking park or a nature for kids to come. It's, the trails aren't very well-developed. If it were just a, and reasonable amount of money put into it, I think people would go to it more and enjoy that beautiful nature spot. I don't know if you've all been to that park, but I would encourage you to go up there. It's, it's just, and all the unique views that you go to when you go up at top or down below, it just changes. And the trees are pretty mature now, the fir trees that were planted, and it's, it would just be heartbreaking to see that change in such a radical way for just, just a small amount of use, you know, real specific use like that. And we were thinking, oh, we'll come up with some other ideas, and we thought agile dancer, there's some fallow ground out there that could be utilized right near the skate park, which would be, you know, like, really makes sense, because you'd have the same, you know, kids, the same age groups, and wanting to really have fun on their bikes and fun on their skateboards, you know, which you do want to have a place for that community of people, but I don't think that's the right place for it. And so, you know, please consider that.
Thank you. Claudia, do we have anybody else signed up?
Yes, next we have Emily Kerrigan.
Hi, I'm Emily, and I live in McMinnville, and I'm responding to Barbara Boyer and this other kind woman here. I totally agree with them about preserving that area. I do live in West Hills, and, and I do walk around and go up Red, let's see, what is it, Redmond Hill Road to the, to the end, there's turkeys up there, there's a lot going on up there. And again. And again, putting in, taking all the habitat out and those old growth trees, it just is wrong, you know? I think there probably are other places where development could take place where it's flatter. I know farmland is really precious, but so is that habitat, so is that area, and, you know, we've got to think about the generations to come, but I just 200% support Barbara and this other gal that spoke tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is everyone that signed up.
Okay. Was there anybody else, or was? Nope. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everybody that took the time, and we will try to get back to you with some answers. And our next thing up is airshow presentation. Bill Brack, President of the Oregon International Airshow, to present.
Thanks for allowing us to come and make a couple of presentations to council and to some of the staff. My name is Bill Brock. I'm the current president of Oregon International Airshow, and we have my replacement, Eric Corning, who will take over duties here in a few months, about four months, I guess. But on behalf of our Board of Directors and our almost 600 volunteers and our small staff, we wanted to come and present a few tokens to say thank you, and I think we just completed our sixth year in town, and we're committed to the community, and we're going to have some fun giving activities here in the very near future. I've talked with City Manager Ron, and we're going to have some fun with that and impact a whole bunch of kids, so we're looking forward to that. But for today, we have some lithos. I don't know, Jeff, who you'd like us to present to, the mayor? Each year, when the jet teams come to us, they give us a certain number of these lithos, and a litho is just a token of their appreciation of the community that they might be in or might be supporting. And that one is our, our Thunderbird litho from this year. You're all right. And we had the Blue Angels last year, and we noticed in going through our notes that they didn't do one for the city, so we reached out to them. We're a bit late on that one, but they were gracious enough to add another litho for the city. Not on that one, no. I miss Mike. Good fellow. All right. And we have one for the police department, if the chief is here. And chief, if you'll, since Captain Simons is not here, I don't believe, while your predecessor was out vacationing under the excuse of some sort of medical procedure, Captain Simons sort of took the lead and was very super helpful. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I don't think the chief is here or Amy, so we'll work with fire folks on those. But we do have a coin for each of the commissioners, or city councilors, sorry. Thank you. While he's handing that out, if I could answer any questions, any of you?
Thank you. Yeah, you too.
So tell us when we expect to see it this year.
For those that have been around for a while, we've had the Blue Angels, we've had the Thunderbirds, we've had an international team, the Red Arrows were here in 2019, and this year, we have another international team, the Royal Canadian Air Force Snowbirds will be joining us, along with two other demo teams, three other demo teams, military demo teams. And next year, 2026, the Blue Angels will be returning to Oregon and coming back to McMinnville. We're super excited to have them joining us again.
Well, thank you for everything that you've done and all the years you put into it. I'm excited to have somebody taking over that sounds like he has as much experience or...
Much more experience. He's going to do a better job.
A lot of different experiences, but the team here, one of the things that got me excited, I came to the McMinnville Airshow this last year, is they just do such a solid job, and so we're just trying to be able to build on this fabulous legacy the Bills left us.
Great. Our community has enjoyed it.
We appreciate being here, the hospitality, working with your police department, and now your fire district, all first-class operations. They've done a superb job, and we've enjoyed our time out here. As I told City Manager, though, we did tell the Thunderbirds never again on Labor Day weekend. That was just a tough, tough weekend for us, and for everyone, for all the staff and folks that, you know, came out and worked. So you'll never see Labor Day weekend from us again.
Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
Now we have reports from councilors on committees and board assignments. I'm going to start with Counselor Tekolsky.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I had the YCOM Yamhill Communications Agency Executive Board meeting today, and I took a few notes of interest during 2024 versus 2023. The number of incidents were actually up for YCOM eight and a half percent, so that's not insignificant. There was some good news. The dispatcher quality assurance program, there's an industry standard score of 85%, which they have to achieve. YCOM has achieved 98.4% score, so they're 13.4% above the standard. That's great. It means we have great service. The other thing is February is heart month, so since we're talking about cardiac arrest, the goal for CPR administration is less than 120 seconds. YCOM scored 76 seconds, which was 44 seconds faster than the goal. Some of the challenges that they're facing, we have 13 dispatchers that are budgeted. We currently have a deficit of three dispatchers and two supervisors, so still some work to do in that area for headcount. One finance side of things, the city dues will be coming in April for the use of YCOM. Last year, during 2024, McMinnville's contract was $665,000, so it's not insignificant, but it's a great service. Interesting knows that some people might find interesting, the integrated text to 911, which is where you can text 911, is going to be piloted with YCOM, and it will be going live in the future for testing, but not for actual use yet, but they did want to stress that texting takes eight minutes on average for a 911 call versus a voice call, which takes two minutes. So if you do have a real emergency where you can speak, then you should obviously use the voice call. So that's everything from my update.
Thank you. Counselor Payne?
Thank you. None of my committee appointments have met since the 28th, I think was when we were last year. DEIC meets on Thursday, though, so I'm looking forward to that. Thanks.
Counselor Gary?
Thank you. You met last week, whenever a lot of budgets roll up of last year's fiscal report for the previous year and then forecast for '25, '26, including the budget revenue and projects. Projects looking at being in the, having money allocated to them in the '25, '26 are development assistance grants, Third Street Improvement work, district identity such as rooftop lightings and wayfinding, downtown master plan effort, housing development, potential property acquisition are all things that are in there. And Visit McMinnville had, we're, I still haven't had a meeting for them yet, that's next week or the end of the month. And Stormwater, Wastewater Committee is getting going again, and Tuesday, the 18th, at the Wharf, will be there.
At the Wharf?
At the Wharf.
What's the Wharf?
Water Reclamation Facility. The Wharf.
Down by the sea.
Wharf, he's the Klingon, right? Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Counselor Peralta?
You did that because I got the Wharf reference, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Thank you. So the only committee that I had that met between the last meeting and this one is planning, and I was asked not to participate in that meeting because the topic may come before council. So the only thing I can tell you is that meeting took two hours because they had a work session afterwards, which I didn't participate in. That meeting discussed the '24 through '27 work plan for the planning department. There are several items that are going to be coming to city council that kind of follow three different general categories, urban growth, boundary expansion, state mandated components, specialty planning, and code amendments. And I guess the only comment I'd make is that we may want to, as a council, take a look at the planning department's workload and see if there are things on there that are not priorities, the things that are in our control, we might be able to make changes to that. And wanted to also make a note that planning is now fully staffed for the first time since I've been on council, so that's exciting. 5.85 people who are, whose work is basically split between long range and current planning. So grateful for that department and Heather's leadership and look forward to working with them going forward.
Thank you. Counselor Chinwet?
The only committee I had that met in the last two weeks was the Innovation PAC, and we went over the, they're in the middle of a master planning process for the airport, and so Willie did a kind of update on where that's at. We covered where that, where it's heading and where it's currently at. It's not done yet, so I hate to say too much there. The next meeting that we're going to have, the homework we are giving is to come up with name ideas for the innovation campus. So if there's anything that comes to mind, or if anybody listening has some suggestions, my email's on the website, I'd love to hear some ideas. Thanks.
Counselor Cunningham?
Yeah, the committee that met over the last two weeks was the Historic Landmarks Committee, in that we discussed the best use of a CLG grant. Heather, I forget the, thank you. And ultimately, there was lots of great ideas, but the one that we chose to go with was a review of our inventory of historic properties. The last time that was done was in 1985, and it basically only can look back, it excludes the 50 years in front of it. So 1935 and older were the properties, both residential and commercial, and probably religious, and public, that were in that last time that inventory was done. And so we're going to use this grant money to do another inventory, but this now will go up to 1975. And so we see some areas, especially some amazing mid-century modern homes, that would probably fall into that this point in time. And then one note where the last time the inventory was done is no matter whether you agreed to or not, you are included in it. This time, these properties, the property owners will be given the option to opt in to the program. But ultimately, lots of potential benefit, both to understanding what properties we have out there, but also there was some talk of people that would opt in, might be interested in, you know, type of home tours and some other, to be able to see these amazing, beautiful properties. And one to kind of note, if you want to kind of see, and I'm going to forget the street that it's on, but it's the Newby House, actually has a QR code right out in the front yard there that you can use your phone and scan, and it'll tell you about the history of the home. So we're hoping that that will be more of the types of things that we'll be able to see out of that.
Cool. Okay.
And I will have, in the next week, I'll have the, my first meeting with the Housing Production Strategy Group, as well as another Historic Landmarks Committee, and I think that's it.
Okay, and so what I have, hopefully the councilors have looked in your packet, and there's a memo. So in the past, in August 29, August 29, 2023, BDS Planning and Urban Design recommended that the city council and the McMinnville Water and Light meet on a quarterly basis. The general manager presents to the council quarterly, and then the actual council and commission meet twice a year. I make a, I've made a recommendation that we change that, that the general manager and the city manager meet twice a year, March and September, and the council and the commission of water and light meet only annually in July. Does a counselor have any questions?
May I?
Yes.
Just in the, I don't have any objections. I feel like in the past, the, at least the council and commission discussed sort of different topics at each of these meetings, if I, and I may not be recalling correctly because it was over the last couple of years, but like at one point, I remember hearing about all their updates, and then another, we got an update on like wildland fire concerns and sort of like addressing, and that was kind of after the fact. And so I guess in an effort to prevent longer meetings and have thorough information, I would be fine with staying with two a year. Summers are hard, so I would discourage at minimum adding another meeting in, or a longer meeting in July. And if we're going to do one, maybe moving it to September or October.
So you want to change the month that they meet or make it longer? Tell me again what you're...
At minimum, not do it in July, like not do it over the summertime, just vacation, community members being out. What's vacation? And then it is wildland season, so I wouldn't want McMinnville Water and Light to be burdened with what their, you know, what their suppression efforts might be. Perhaps John's already weighed in on that, but...
He did. It came from the Water and Light. I met with them first, so I, the dates of the months did come from the Water and Light Commission, from, excuse me, the general manager, just so you know.
Do we know, is there an assumption of how long those meetings would be? Because we've done, we've done sort of the spectrum, like at one point, I think we did like a four to six hour meeting, and then other, you know, occasionally, John will just present to the council or we'll do a work session, and that might be an hour and a half. So I guess I would have strong feelings about not having a longer additional meeting in July. So if it's going to be past two hours, that would, that would be my significant concern is just counselor attendance, but it's a work session, right?
Right. I wouldn't think that we pass two hours, but I can't, I can't say, I can't say for any work session how long it will take, honestly. But they'll still be reporting twice a year, so he would still come talk to the council. But I understand, so thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Okay, so that takes me to, do I have a motion? It can be a motion, it can be amended motion.
This is to accept the recommendation of the change of the...
Correct.
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Do we have discussion?
No, do we, are still, sorry. Is there more discussion?
So at this point, would it be appropriate to do a friendly amendment to...
If, this would be the moment if that's what you decided to do.
So I would, I would, the only amendment that I would like to make is just in recognition of Counselor Payne's concerns, maybe we remove the specific month that we do the meeting from the...
meeting from the motion?
Okay.
And I'm not sure how to word it, but that's what I'd like the outcome, or that's what I'm moving, that we amend the motion.
So, if I'm understanding, you move to meet with the general manager and the city manager to meet twice a year, present twice a year, and to meet with a joint council and commission meeting annually, months to be determined?
Yes, thank you, mayor.
Okay.
That, is that, is, that has to be...
If you made a motion to amend, then we need to decide on that. That would need to be seconded and voted on before we vote on the major motion.
Okay.
I, did you make a motion, so?
Yeah.
I would second that motion.
Okay. So, now we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
That is whether to accept the amendment, that is not whether to pass the whole motion.
Yes, to accept the amendment.
Are we doing the Claudia poll?
Yes. That new poll. I've got to get used to that poll.
Councilor Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilor Tocolsky?
Aye.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Councilor Payne?
Aye.
Councilor Geary?
Aye.
Council President Peralta?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Second.
Now, we are back to discussing the main motion as amended.
Okay.
If that discussion is done, you can call for a roll call.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I would like to just comment, for the record, that what led to us doing this was some relationship struggles that had occurred between the city council or the city and McWater and Light. I'm not opposed to this change, I will be voting in favor of this change, but I do want us to be very cognizant and careful to not allow that to happen again. So, just want to say that for the record.
Any further discussion? Claudia?
Councilor Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilor Tocolsky?
Aye.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Councilor Payne?
Aye.
Councilor Geary?
Aye.
Council President Peralta?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go to department head reports. City Manager Jeff Towery.
Thank you, mayor, I'm way over here today. Thank you, mayor, members of the city council, a couple items. One, sort of a quick follow-up to the presentation from Bill and Eric. Just note that the front of the coin has the jet team on it, the relief on the back of the coin are the other aircraft who perform. You'll see this year in the bottom right-hand corner, there's what looks like a police badge, and that's because it is. It has Matt Scale's badge number on it, and they added him to the coin this year, knowing he was going to retire, and in thanks for his long service and partnership. And if you're curious, yes, he cried when it happened. Second and final item, just to note that we are starting our round one budget meetings with departments the next three days, so by the end of Friday, my brain's going to be full of numbers, and Katie and I in particular are going to be a little bit challenging to reach for the next three days because we'll be in a lot of budget meetings. Thank you, mayor.
Do you want to introduce Katie? Sorry.
Katie Henry is our brand newly minted finance director, and we are thrilled to have her on board, and you will see more of her later. She's a quick study and has already jumped right in the middle of helping us find any number of solutions. She got a, her first big win was to transition to purchase cards, and she was able to coast on the glory of Scott Burke and the rest of the team, actually got the work all done, and she was able to announce it on her first day.
Thank you.
City Attorney?
Thank you, mayor, nothing from the legal department tonight.
Director Richards?
Nothing to report tonight, thank you.
City Recorder Claudia?
Yes, just want to state that Monday, city offices will be closed in honor of President's Day, and everyone should have received the calendar invite for the joint city council and McMinnville School District work session scheduled for March 31st, starting at 6:30, hosted by the school board.
And a reminder that there's a tour tomorrow?
Yes, for those who have signed up. Yeah.
And I see HR Director Vicki Hedges?
Nothing to report tonight, thank you, mayor.
And Chief Wood?
Nothing from the police department tonight.
Perfect. Did I miss Jeff? Do you have anything to report?
It's cold out there, it's also going to be cold and wet tomorrow, so Public Works is getting prepared for a potential roadwork with the winter mix coming. Doing our best to keep the roads safe for everybody, but would appreciate it if everybody else also keeps themselves safe, so we don't have to deal with as many incidents out there.
Thank you. Councilor Cunningham, did you have something?
I'll connect up with Jeff afterwards.
Okay. Oh, did you have something you wanted to report?
I don't have anything really to report besides what Jeff already said about the budget, besides to say that I am very impressed with the finance team and how well they have kept things moving in the absence of a finance director, and it is such a pleasure to come in, have these first-round budget meetings in my second week here, and already have everything set up so that I can just jump right in on week two and have the full proposed, not proposed your way, but the full draft right here for me to work with, and I have the full version here tonight. So, that is just a pleasure, and just something to say about the staff that I have working for me. So, I'm very excited to be here and very excited to see where we can go to further things with all of you on council as well.
Right, thank you. Is that everybody? Looks like it is. Okay, thank you. Next, we're going to go to the consent agenda. Is there any councillor that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
I would, I'd like to remove number, or number, letter C, please.
Okay. Okay, so, we can look at the minutes as one motion. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from January 22nd and January 28th of 2025?
Mayor, I actually have a correction to the minutes.
On page 13, sorry, January 28 minutes, page 13, the fifth paragraph, it states that
it's talking about Wortman Park, instead of Warman Park. So, I just didn't like that.
I'll fix that.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as corrected?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion from councillor Geary, a second from councillor Chenoweth. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please let Claudia know.
Councilor Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilor Tocolsky?
Aye.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Councilor Payne?
Aye.
Councilor Geary?
Aye.
And Council President Peralta?
Aye.
The consent agenda has passed as amended with the correction in the minutes via a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Okay, now we will look at C, which is Resolution 2025-06, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Turf Star Western Equipment for the purchase of a 2025 Toro Grounds Maker, Grounds Master 4000D 11 rotary mower. Okay.
I, I have nothing against this resolution. I actually secretly want to retire as one of our lawn mowers in the years to come, not immediately, but I did, it was shocking to me to realize how expensive one of those mowers is, and just for the benefit of the gallery, I won't take any guesses, but $92,000 for a lawnmower is what we'll be paying for this, and it just goes into show that to have these beautiful parks and get them taken care of, it's, it takes a lot.
So, do you want to give us a motion to have that pass?
Yes, I should move to have it pass.
Second.
So, a motion from councillor Cunningham, a second from councillor Geary. Any further discussion?
I did have a question, yeah.
Okay.
I only saw the singular quote from that one place. What, our policy for getting multiple quotes, this is where I've done that before, we have to get a minimum of three to try to keep it competitive.
Mr. Towery, can you answer that?
Can anybody comment on that?
Actually, I'm going to ask Public Works Director Hunzaker to address that question.
I'll have to double-check here, but I believe we did reach out for multiple quotes, and just the one that we're pursuing is the one that was...
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'll have to double-check here, but I do believe we looked at quotes from multiple vendors, and the one that's included is the one that we're accepting, so let me double-check here real quick.
Okay, it's, it's fine, I just didn't see the other one, so it didn't tell me that we found multiple quotes.
Should we wait for you to see, or...
We may have only received the one quote, but we put it out for multiple people to submit on it.
I just find it challenging that we have one quote for $92,000 and we're moving forward with that, but...
Well, we solicited, we solicited multiple bids, but only received one.
Right. Oh, here we go.
So, part of the bid contracting is the requirements through the federal government and then passed down through the state, so as long as we're in compliance with the federal government requirements, those are the most stringent. By going through the Interstate Cooperative Purchasing Program, we meet those federal requirements, and so that is what ensures that we are meeting all of those requirements. If, at the end of going through that process, we end up with this Toro Grandmaster, then we have fulfilled all of the needs for that. As I am reading the staff report, that's what I'm gathering from it, I haven't gone through it in detail, but that's the verbiage that, to me, would say that staff who was here before me has met those requirements.
So, if I understand that correctly, we use a, like a cooperative that we go through in order to find the best deals for what we're purchasing?
That's correct, that Sourcewell is the cooperative that was used for this.
Okay, I did read through that.
And Sourcewell gives you multiple quotes for singular product?
Sourcewell is the, advertised the RFP, and so it went through a sealed proposal process. Yes.
And we only received one in response?
One that met the specific capacity needs that the city had.
Oh, I would question, are the specifications we're asking for unreasonable, so only one person quoted it?
I would have to review those to see. You will see upcoming in some of our budget discussions, some needs for additional contract staff to, with expertise in this area, because it is an area that I would have to agree with you.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Yes, councillor.
To councillor Tocolsky's concerns, as far as how, like, how come there's only one, I'm curious about the notice only being published in the Daily Journal of Commerce versus being published more locally, whether that's through the Oregonian or the News Register, like, we're a farming community, so I'm surprised that one of the four dealers we have wouldn't offer to compete.
No further questions, mayor. Thank you.
So, let, we have a motion on the floor, let's deal with that motion, and then we can have, unless there's further discussion you want to have right now?
Mayor?
Yes.
Just so I can know, we often rely on other agencies' established procurement processes, and this is one of those examples. It's a fairly specialized piece of equipment, we wouldn't necessarily expect multiple providers, and this process is something that we use for other unique at-large equipment. So, we don't often get four or five proposals on a police car, or a mower, or a dump truck, but we go through this state and federally approved procurement process to ensure that we're getting a fair price and also meeting the specifications that, that we have set.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
How do we know it's a fair price if we've only received one quote or bid?
Well, we actually, we actually budgeted amount, and this was fairly close, so we expected to spend about $90,000 for the equipment, the bid came in at just over 92, so slightly higher.
I understand, and may I ask another question?
Yes, you may.
We budgeted 90, we had 92 as our bid or quote, whichever you like to call it, and we did that off of historical information from our neighbors, it sounds like, or others that have procured this equipment?
We, we, if...
How do we know they didn't also end up with a deal that wasn't fair? And then we used their number?
I'm not sure how I can answer that question, councillor. We, we take our fiduciary responsibility really seriously. We utilize these legal and lawfully established procurement processes, and, and with all the best of intentions and the best we can do, provide these sorts of recommendations to you. And if you'd like to know more about the procurement process, we'd be happy to provide that kind of an information, that kind of information to you.
I actually would, and this was no, this is not directed at you, city manager Towery, this is just, in general, when we're spending the taxpayers' money, I want to make sure that we're actually doing our job, so that's all I'm inquiring about it this time.
Thank you. Finance? Okay.
I just wanted to offer, perhaps, we could do a training session or something like that on, on procurement itself. This is a state procurement contract, so this is the way that we ensure that we are meeting those requirements, but I do understand that if, if this isn't something that we're used to, the mechanisms of it, and the how does this ensure that we have the lowest price, isn't obvious from just looking at it. And so, I had spoken with Jeff briefly, and with some others, but in the past, I've done some academies, shall we say, for some of these more intricate finance things that are just different in the government world. It'll take a while, I've been here a week and a few days, but you're welcome to set up time with me, obviously Jeff directs my work, but you're wel, I'm happy to sit down with any of you to answer questions or to do any group.
Okay, councillor Chenoweth has a question.
Just a comment, I appreciate councillor Tocolsky's carefulness with the taxpayers' dollars and what he's trying to get at here, and I didn't, I didn't receive what you were saying as some sort of a impugning of the process, just wanting clarity, I got that. I would be very interested if you do put some sort of training together, that I would love, as long as it's either done as a public meeting, or if we don't have a quorum, I'd love to be a part of that training as well, so just wanted to state that, thank you.
And I'd like to know in that, how it reflects to local businesses, if we do, if we can, look at them or not. One more comment from councillor Peralta.
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge that I was able to Google this Toro Grandmaster 4000D ride-on mower, and found a price of 122,637 at the mower superstore, so I think our price is probably in the ballpark.
And if I may, I also did the same thing earlier today, and I came up with a price of about 50 grand, so...
For a, for a new one? Because I saw older ones for, for...
This is water under the bridge now, I don't, I don't, I don't want to debate all night.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor with a, a motion and a second, so... Okay, so I have a motion on the floor with a, a motion and a second, so, um, Claudia, can we take a vote?
Counselor Cunningham?
Aye.
Counselor Tokolski?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
And Counsel President Peralta?
Aye.
Resolution number 2025-06 passes by a vote of five to one.
Thank you, and thank you to all of you for your comments and concerns. Um, next we go to Resolution 2025-05, a resolution appointing four members to the Affordable Housing Committee and McMinnville Economic Vitality Leadership Council. I call on Director Heather Richards to present.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. Uh, so this is appointing members to two of our committees that have a somewhat non-traditional makeup of members and appointments to those committees themselves. Um, this is appointing, uh, four members to our Affordable Housing Committee. For the enabling ordinance for the Affordable Housing Committee, we actually have two city councillors that sit on the committee itself as voting members. That's, that's a little bit atypical of our committees, but it was, uh, decided when we put the Affordable Housing Committee together, that, um, this committee was so important and would impact the city, uh, in terms of the different programs and funding related to those programs, that we wanted city councillors actually sitting on the committee itself. So those city councillors are recommended by the mayor, but appointed by the city council in, by resolution. So those two appointments are Scott Cunningham and Sal Peralta. They'll be recommended by the mayor. And then we went through, um, an advertisement and interview process for one of our vacancies, and the, uh, interview committee re, is recommending Jennifer Nice as an appointment to the Affordable Housing Committee for a three-year term that expires December 31, 2027, and then recommending Emily Johnson to serve as an ex officio member representing Yam Hill Community Care YCCO. Excuse me, there's a typo in the resolution. Uh, the second appointment is for the McMinnville Economic Vitality Leadership Council. This is a council that's comprised of representatives from all of our economic development partners, and, uh, their role and charge is to implement the MacTown 2032 Economic Development Strategic Plan. The, um, the, it's, the council is made up of representatives from the McMinnville Downtown Association, Chamber of Commerce, McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, Visit McMinnville, and all of those partners each, um, nominate two people to serve on the council, and that comes from those partners themselves. Uh, the McMinnville School District nominates one person to serve on the council as well, and then, um, McMinnville Water and Light nominates one person to serve on the council. The city of McMinnville has, um, two seats as well to fill, uh, through nominations, and then the council itself has three at-large representatives. Those three at-large positions are based on a recommendation from the McMinnville Economic Vitality Leadership Council and appointed by the city council to, to the coun, to the MEVLC itself. So tonight you have in front of you the two recommendations representing the city of McMinnville. We have traditionally had a councillor rep, uh, filling one of those seats, and a member of the, um, McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee serving, filling one of those seats. And so the recommendation is Peter Kircher from Murak. Murak is the one that voted and nominated Pete, Peter to that role. And then the mayor has recommended Chris Chenoweth, representing the city council. Then the MEVLC voted on, um, recommending Paul Davis, who is, um, from Shemetica Community College, uh, and was one of the founding members of putting the MacTown 2032 Economic Development Strategic Plan together to be an at-large representative, and he's very excited to join the council. Uh, and both Paul and Peter's, um, terms expire December 31, 2027.
Thank you, Director Richards. Councilors, have any questions? I asked for a motion to consider Resolution 2025-05.
So moved.
Counselor Payne? I have a second from...
I'll second, yes.
Counselor Tokolski? Any further discussion? Claudia?
And just want to, uh, uh, be clear that it'd be with the correction that Heather stated.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Cunningham?
Aye.
Counsel, Counselor Tokolski?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta, or Counsel President Peralta?
Aye.
Uh, the Resolution number 2025-05 with a correction passed unanimously.
And I don't think any of them are in the room to say congratulations. Well, sorry, you guys. Hate to tell you, you don't count, but... Thank you for your service. Okay. The city council will be going into the conference room for a close to the public for two executive sessions. The first pursuant to ORS 192.660, Section 2D, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations, and the second pursuant to ORS 192.660, Section 2H, to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Does any councillor need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding any of the above executive sessions for the record?
Mayor, I, I do need to declare for, uh, 192.6602D, the labor negotiations, I do have an actual conflict of, uh, interest, and I will, uh, recuse myself from that portion.
Thank you. All right. We will now adjourn the city council meeting at 8:07 PM.